Call the Tuesday, February 25th, 2020, meeting of the Portsmouth City Council, which happens to be a work session this quarter. Madam Clerk, will you call the role, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle, Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Glover.
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke. Mr. Moody.
Here.
Ms. Demis.
Here.
Mayor Rea.
Here. Dr. Patton.
Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Our first presentation this evening is a presentation of the state of the economy. Every year Hampton Roads Planning District Commission economic staff to prepare regional economic forecasts for the upcoming year, including a review of local and national trends. The forecast includes an assessment of what the region can expect for the coming year. Mr. Greg Brutendorf, Chief Economist at HRPDC, is here this evening to present the HRPDC 2020 Economic Forecast. The second presentation, Housing Strategy. In the FY 2019 budget, under External Focus Commitment to Community, members of City Council, you adopted a housing and community planning initiative that stated that started the development of principles, goals, and strategic tools to address and guide future housing needs in the city of Portsmouth. Such initiative is the first for our city. Tonight, Mr. Philip Cash and Mrs. Sarah Kurt of HRNA Advisors, a real estate and economic development consulting firm, will present to you the initial housing assessment. Our consultants will discuss their findings to date, including an inclusive vision for housing in Portsmouth, and begin the discussion with City Council on how to make the vision reality. And lastly, the annual reassessment report. The last presentation this evening is the annual reassessment report presented by the City Assessor, Mr. Holt Boff. We will start with Mr. Brutendorf.
Greg, before you start, I'd like to key this up. The Planning District has been doing economic forecasts for, and I may have the date wrong, but at least two decades, and I have seen quite a few of these, and to me, they're the gold standard in doing this type of studies. And so I've seen this presentation, and it's really awesome. It goes into a lot of detail, and thank you for taking time to brief the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really appreciate that. Dr. Patton, members of the council. Yeah, we've actually been doing it for three decades.
Three decades.
My predecessor, John Whaley, started this in 1990, so this would be the 30th year, which is quite some time. And the interesting thing about the forecast is, you know, the forecast itself, I think people are looking, you know, what are your numbers for the next year? And, you know, economists are horrible at forecasting, and they do it anyways because people, you know, I think are kind of curious. But the real value in delivering a forecast, I think, isn't the forecast itself, because tomorrow things are going to change, and the week after, and the month after, it's all going to change.
Yeah.
And we have no idea, but the value lies in kind of the lay of the landscape, where we are right now, where the indicators are, and what we're looking for, because clearly I have no idea what's going to happen in Washington next month, or, you know, three months from now. Nobody does, but we do have a pretty strong understanding of, you know, what things impact the economy, how they impact it, and where the concerns are, and where the potential bright spots are. So with that, typically Hampton Roads has followed the national economy. So if you're going back to 1990 and before, whatever happened to the national economy, you could look at the U.S. and say, the U.S. is doing well, Hampton Roads is doing well. The U.S. is not doing well, then Hampton Roads got a cause for concern. The past decade, things have changed significantly in that course. So if we look at the national economy, we can go back and say, well, if we go back to the pre-recession high, the Great Recession had a huge impact. Gross domestic product, the broadest measure of economic measure, is up 21% from pre-recession high. That's fantastic. Non-farm civilian employment, these are the headline employment numbers that you see every month. You know, they bounce around, and people get really excited when they're, you know, 250,000, and depressed when they're 140,000. But if you look month over month, you can go back to 2009, this is the type of line you'd love to forecast. It's been pretty consistent growth, averaging about 1.7% per year since the recession low, but our non-farm civilian growth has just been relatively consistent at the national level. If we look at the unemployment rate, unemployment rate, the number itself is a useless number. I say that quite often, but what comprises the unemployment rate is pretty interesting, and that's your labor force characteristics. The trends of unemployment rates are interesting. Like, for example, you would look at a Portsmouth trend, or Hampton Roads trend, or a U.S. trend. You wouldn't compare a Portsmouth number versus a Williamsburg number. Williamsburg unemployment rate's much higher than Portsmouth is, and James City County's going to be lower. That's just the nature of the different economies of the localities. But the trends are important. So if we look at the national trend here, we can see, at one point, we were at a 10% high, we're down 3.5%, it just bumped up to 3.6%. We're not quite at what economists would say it's underemployment. When you have underemployment, it starts pushing up inflation significantly. We're not seeing inflation come up, but one of the benefits of having pretty low unemployment rates consistently should be that it pushes up on wages, right? Because if you can't find anybody to fill your positions, then you're going to have to go out, and you're going to have to offer people more money to fill those positions, and when you do that, you have to pay your staff more. And wages, in spite of what a lot of media says, have been relatively flat for many, many, many years. So we're not seeing much wage growth, we're not seeing inflation pressures up, so this low unemployment rate should be good, we're just waiting for kind of the benefits to pay off on that. But pretty far down. The stock market bounces all over the place. Couple weeks ago, the Dow broke 29,000. Last couple of days clearly haven't been so good, but it is bouncing around pretty significantly. If we look at it, we're up almost 350% from the pre-recession, from the recession low, 112% from the pre-recession high. So again, everything looks pretty good on the national front, or we'd like to think, you know, if we're looking back over the past decade. Couple things, you know, we've been told that the economy is doing really well, the economy is doing really well. I think we're kind of redefining what really well means when it comes to the economy. Last time we saw GDP growth over the long-term average was 2005, and so that black bar there is long-term average U.S., that's average, long-term average. We haven't hit that since 2005. So our really strong economy is not really strong, it's just doing okay. And if we look at national employment growth, again, these are the civilian year-over-year, or the headline numbers that we see month over month. If we look at this year-over-year, you start to see that we're kind of in a little bit of a decline there. Things are starting to slow down at the, still good, still all right, but starting to slow down kind of at the national level. So that's the nation. If we start looking at Hampton Roads, here we have employment decline and recover, and essentially what we're showing here is if you start at that zero, that's when we entered the Great Recession. So for the black line, that's the U.S., the orange line is Virginia, the green line is Hampton Roads, and we can see that one thing's kind of strange, right? The green line's longer. Why is the green line longer? Well, Hampton Roads entered into recession before the nation and before the Commonwealth did. And when that dropped below zero, we're tracking jobs, so when it went down, we noticed that jobs went down, and when you bounce back up over that red line, that's when you finally recovered the civilian jobs that were lost during the Great Recession. And for the U.S. and for Virginia, it took 76 months, roughly six years, to regain all the jobs they lost during the Great Recession. For Hampton Roads, it took 10 years, one month shy of 10 years. And if you look at how the initial drop went, you saw the U.S. dropped, and incidentally, this little bump here is the 2010 census. So census plays a role in that, something to keep in mind. But you see Hampton Roads dropped, and then kind of had a mini plateau. That was the Ford plant closing. So the Ford plant, if some of you can remember way back when, when that closed, that was a significant hit to the economy. And then what's happened is we have been struggling and struggling and struggling to return those jobs. We look at Hampton Roads gross product, and we compare this, you know, we adjust for inflation, and we look how well we've doing, how well we've been doing. Over the past decade, we've grown at 0.7%, so less than 1% over the past decade. And that's not per year, that's over the past decade. Our economy has grown at less than 1%. That's not good. If we compare to other metropolitan areas, you can see on the high end here, we have San Jose, Austin, San Antonio, Seattle, Raleigh, some of those economies have been growing gangbusters. On the other end, New Orleans, Hartford, Hampton Roads. So this is looking at 10-year growth, and it's comparing metropolitan areas between 1 and 4 million, so we drop off all the tiny ones, and we drop off the New York, Chicago L.A.s, just really comparable-sized metro areas. And if we look at things like employment, we're 35th, income, we're 36th, gross product, we're 37th, we're not doing well.
And if I may interrupt and point out on that chart, look at us compared to Richmond. Richmond is twice Hampton Roads.
Yes, Richmond has been doing, absolutely Richmond has been doing better. If we look at, this is Hampton Roads civilian employment, if we just look at the numbers, you know, I want to point again, how much we're just kind of bouncing around. We have fits and starts, we're going up and down, there's been kind of a trend towards recovery, but that trend has not been consistent across industries. So just taking a quick look, how have different industries felt this very anemic post-recession growth? Healthcare, leisure hospitality, federal government, scientific, technical, over the past 10 years, we've seen those industries actually growing pretty strong. Manufacturing, that's fantastic. On the other end there, local government has been struggling all over the region for some time, wholesale trade, information, state government, you know, so there is certainly a very different experience by industry as to how well they're doing. If we look just over the past year.
And if I may interrupt again.
Sure.
Your chart shows that actually local government has shrunk.
Absolutely.
In the number of jobs.
Yes. And there's a lot, you know, there's a lot going along there. The Planning Directors convene once every quarter, and they talk, and I'm just bringing this up with Bob Baldwin here. One of the things we've been noticing is that localities in various departments are struggling to even find staff. They can't compete with the private sector, and local governments here, because they can't pay them, and they can't attract people in because they don't have the finances to do so. So it's difficult for localities across the region, and we're seeing government shrink because of that, and, you know, there's short-term and long-term implications of that.
Some sectors, they would say that's a good trend, shrinking government.
Shrinking government can be good, right? When done strategically.
Yeah, absolutely.
But when you're no longer compete, then it can be more difficult, and I think that's, we've hit that point where we're unable to compete, so that's a little bit scary. When we look at year-over-year employment changes, one of the things I want to point out there is construction. Construction has been booming. Leisure and hospitality, our tourism sector has been doing well, scientific, technical, healthcare, manufacturing. So those are some pretty strong indicators. Again, on the bottom, administrative support, local government, retail trade, transportation and utilities. I'll specifically point out retail trade a little bit later, but again, you can see that the experience is not consistent across industries. So as employment bumps and moves around and has fits and starts, some industries are doing well and others are not. Going back to those unemployment rates, our current unemployment rate is 2.93%. Doesn't mean a whole lot, it's the lowest it's been since 2001. That goes for both the Commonwealth and Hampton Roads. The U.S. is actually at a 50-year low when it comes to the actual rate, not particularly interesting, but if we take a little bit of a deeper look at what is happening in our labor force, what I'm showing you here is the Hampton Roads labor force going back to 2000. So the labor force essentially consists of people who are employed and people who are unemployed. The unemployment rate is the number of unemployed people divided by the entire labor force, and that's how you come up with the rate. And you can see, if I just show you this kind of boring chart, it's been pretty stagnant. You can see the orange bar on the bottom, the unemployed, that's moved a little bit, but overall, the labor force has been growing slowly. If we look at just the unemployed people, so these are the number of people who, when surveys go out and we're asking, are you employed or are you not, the number of people responding to their unemployment, unemployed, has dropped significantly, 61% decline. We have 25,400 people who say they are unemployed. That is really, really low, and that should be, again, a good thing for the region, especially with respect to wages, because if it gets really hard to hire people, we should see corporations, businesses that on the books have money, start having to pay some higher wages and see some wage growth. We have not seen that yet, but the longer we have these low unemployment rates, we should see some bounce there. So that is good news for the region. If we look at the labor force in general, one of the things that we can see is that from 2000, 2008, we saw some pretty strong growth in the labor force. Great Recession hit, then we saw very minimal growth, and since the kind of the curtailment of the Great Recession, we're starting to see a little bit of growth, a little bit of stronger growth there, but we think this is probably going to be short-lived. One of the reasons is the percent of prime-age working people, you know, what demographics they say is destiny. We're seeing the aging of the population. And I added this special blue bar just to show you which way it's going, but essentially, if we look at Hampton Roads or the nation, the arrow's going the same direction. There's fewer and fewer people that are joining the workforce just because the shape of the population histogram. We have the baby boomers who are getting set to retire, and as they retire, we're seeing a lot of people exit the labor force, or at least it's prime working age, and fewer and fewer people coming in. So that's going to be an issue with respect to labor force growth, and if there's slow labor force growth, that's going to impact the economy, because we're going to see production levels fall. Talking just a little bit about income, this is per capita income compared to the U.S. Hampton Roads per capita income. So every time you see a blue bar, that means that we're actually above the U.S., that 100% level, and every time you see a red bar, Hampton Roads is below the U.S. average. And if you look at most recent years, you see a troubling trend. We're on a downward slope certainly there. And this is one of those, you know, when we look at quality life, income is certainly a component on that. We don't always have to be at the black level, that black line level, the U.S. level, but when we see those decreases, it is certainly disconcerting. One of the things that should help us kind of turn the corner here is we saw pay raises for DOD employees this year, 3.1%, that's the highest they've been in a decade, still not matching private sector employment growth rates in pay, but at least that's boosting some of us up. That coupled with our historically low unemployment rates should put some pressure on wages, but this is disconcerting for us. On a positive note, if we, this is per capita income, so this is if you take all the income, you divide it by all the people, we don't compare favorably to the nation, and we're clearly on a declining trend there. But if we look at the median family income, which is a much better indicator of quality of life, that's the very middle person, what wage are they making when we compare that? It shows more between the disparities, between the have and have-nots. Our median income compares favorably to the national average, we're actually above, and we're staying above the national average. So I'd rather our median family income be higher than the national average than our per capita income, but certainly wages are a concern in this region, and low wages, you know, we're getting to historic lows for the region, and that's not something that we'd like to see. One of the main reasons that we're seeing such low wages is defense. And this is annualized defense outlays. This is essentially what the whole U.S. is spending, and this is seasonally adjusted in constant dollars, so you compare year to year, but you can see how cyclical this is. There's waves, it goes up and down, up and down, up and down. And the interesting thing here is, historically, when we've seen growth in defense outlays, national defense outlays, we've seen population growth in Hampton Roads, and then we see the cycle swings back down, and population growth flattens out in Hampton Roads. So we saw that for Vietnam War, then we had the 80s Cold War buildup, lots of spending, lots of population growth in Hampton Roads, spending settled down, so it went flat, population growth in Hampton Roads went flat, and then we saw the War on Terror, and it saw a huge increase in spending, and we did not see any population growth in Hampton Roads for the first time. So since Weldon Cooper Center tracks population for all the jurisdictions in Virginia, they do a very good job, better than the census, they've only noted two declines ever in Hampton Roads population. One was following the Vietnam drawdown, and one was last year, 2018. So the only two years Hampton Roads has seen a population decrease as a region.
May I interrupt again? Did they assess what age group left?
This is across age groups, so it's not one particular age group, but the contraction would be in the younger age groups where we're seeing more of a contraction.
A little more.
So this is interesting to us on a couple of levels, especially as defense relates to Hampton Roads, and I'll get into this a little bit more. One of the things that, when you looked at the Hampton Roads economy, and we were doing relatively well, right up until the Great Recession started, is we saw, we didn't see significant growth in military personnel, we were actually seeing cuts, and since 2003, military personnel have been leaving the region, we've lost 30,000 uniformed military personnel. There's a lot of military personnel leaving this region. And so when 2010 happened, right, that was right during the Great Recession, this was pretty significant, because 2010 is when we really saw pretty significant extra cuts to personnel. 2011 was when sequestration set. So we were seeing increases in military spending with the War on Terror, but we were seeing decreases in military personnel. So the personnel were going out, but money was still flowing into the region through contracting. So we did okay, you know, we lost one, but we gained a lot of income through military contracting. Then what happened in, through sequestration is, we saw the military personnel leaving the region, we saw military incomes cut because budgets tightened, so there was no growth in military pay, and then what we saw is these defense contracts, instead of balancing the outflow of military personnel, started exacerbating the outflow of military personnel. So from 2010 to 2017, 2018, you saw essentially a huge syringe sucking DOD dollars out of the region through the military contracts, through military income, through personnel, military personnel, and the private sector has been fighting all that time against this outflow of federal dollars. And that is why Hampton Roads has had such a very different experience than the nation, the Commonwealth and others, in terms of the past decade of economic growth. We have seen our largest sector essentially just being swept out of here. So that has changed in recent years slightly. So in 2018, we saw a tiny bump in military personnel, we just be thankful that we're not seeing them continue to go out of the region. We've seen defense contracts bump up a little bit, certainly not to where they were, but that has at least given our private sector some reprieve from this outflow.
That's the equivalent of losing 3 and 1/2 Franklin's in the region.
Yes.
City of Franklin's.
Or Oceana closing a couple of times plus some, right? Like, these are pretty significant losses in terms of personnel. Touching, just moving to the ports real quick, the ports play a hugely important role in the regional economy. We'll look at this as kind of a three-legged stool. We have defense, we have tourism, and we have the ports. So we look at the ports, I think a lot of people look at the container traffic coming in, and that's a pretty common measure. And if we look at general cargo in Hampton Roads, the number of containers goes up, this really just tracks with international trade. If I put an international trade line over it, it tracks with what we're seeing here. We look at the number of ships, they're declining because they're huge, and you don't need as many ships to take in as many, as many containers. And if we look at the share, it moves around a little bit, but essentially Hampton Roads' share of East Coast ports is staying relatively consistent. There's a lot going on with the ports right now, there's expansion that has, that's coming online right now as we speak, there's been a great deal of investment there. I think the port over the past couple of years has done a phenomenal job of kind of turning the corner, and so in general, the ports have done really well. I just, you know, when we think of the ports, it's not really the number of containers that are going through the ports that are driving our economy. It is all the ancillary things that surround the ports. If we look at logistics, maritime law, if we look at manufacturing that's tied to the location of the port, there's a lot of components that, because we have the ports here, and because the ports are, the port is doing well, it's successful, it's trusted, you know, we don't see any theft or anything out of there, it is competitive with not only the West Coast, but the globe, especially in Portsmouth area, you have one of the most efficient ports in the entire world. That's really important, because that means that we maintain what we have here, and we maintain the logistics, and we maintain the manufacturing, so it is important, and that's why I put this up here. But the ports are doing well, and that means that all these ancillary jobs that are related to the ports are in a strong position moving forward. Tourism expenditures in Hampton Roads, this is kind of interesting to me. This is, when we look at, when we look at tourism, it's certainly important, you know, we go from Virginia Beach all the way down up to the historic triangle, it's a mature industry, but we're not seeing a lot of growth per se, where we have new things coming into the region, a Disney World or something like that landing here, where we're going to see bumps, and, you know, we have what we have, and we've had it for a while, and we're seeing growth. Hotel revenue up, almost 20% in 10 years, employment up, 8% in 10 years. This is, this is really good for us, and I think one of the things that we're seeing is localities are really trying to work at how they capture tourism. I know, you know, the something in the water that was in Virginia Beach last year, people think like, wow, Virginia Beach did well, no, Virginia Beach did well, everybody did well with something in the water. I believe Portsmouth had, you know, record, record stays that weekend, right? So it's when one jurisdiction does well related to tourism, we all do well. And I kind of think, you know, there remains some low-hanging fruit here, because when you all travel, and you go somewhere, whether it's, you know, Chicago, or Paris, or wherever you travel, right, you don't go in one jurisdiction and stay in that jurisdiction, you go and see whatever, whatever attractions are around in that area. And the same is true here. So when people come to the region, they explore all the attractions in the region, but we don't market it that way. You know, Virginia Beach markets Virginia Beach, and Norfolk markets Norfolk, and, you know, Williamsburg is marketing way. We don't market this as Hampton Roads, but you know, there's a good chance if somebody comes to Busch Gardens, they're not staying on the peninsula, if they've traveled all that way, they're here for the weekend, they're going to travel around. But one of the things that has been working is we've been pushing these shoulder seasons. So we're trying to put more and more stuff just, you know, September, October, what can we bring here, races, tournaments, things like that, and then even earlier on, in late May and June, we're really kind of pushing those things, and that has done well for the region, we've seen some, some growth there, so that's fantastic. Hampton Roads retail sales, as you're all aware, retail sales are vitally important to localities, because it's one of the main sources of revenue, and when we look at this, we see there's annualized growth rate, 2.1% since 2006. So retail sales is one of the few ways the Commonwealth lets localities get money. And if we look at it from a little bit of a different perspective, since 2006, the line's going up, annualized growth rate of 0%. All right, so what's going on here? Well, a couple of things. First of all, a lot of the growth that we've seen recently First of all, a lot of the growth that we've seen recently is not growth in how much people are spending, it's how much the Department of Taxation is capturing. And they're capturing more and more online sales. They captured Amazon a while back. Wayfair decision in South Dakota allowed them to capture a whole lot more of electronic online sales. And when I talked to the chief economist in Richmond, he says, hey, guess what? I'll tell you what, our numbers look phenomenal. So when you open the paper, Richmond says, wow, look at all this money we're getting in from the sales tax. It's all because we've captured the online sales component. But that growth, that, that only happens once. Once you've captured it, that's what it is. And the reality is, people are spending less and less on retail goods. It's been flat in Richmond, if you just look overall, and it's been flat while the economy's growing. So if it's flat when the economy's growing, what's going to happen when you no longer are capturing, capturing additional electronic sales? We're, we're in a little bit of trouble here. And the reason I say that is because we have a very antiquated tax system in Virginia. We tax retail goods. People don't spend much on retail goods anymore. I mean, if you look at, you know, your kids, what do they spend money on? It's not stuff to buy, to wear, it's stuff to do. And not just kids, seniors, I mean, the whole economy goes that way. You're paying tax on a diaper, and you're paying tax on a pair of jeans. Pair of jeans hasn't gone up in price, and it's gone down in price in the last 40 years. You're paying tax on that, but when you go get a massage, or you get your hair done, or something like that, you pay no tax on that. There was a study out that was done, geez, probably five years ago now, and what it showed in Virginia is if, if we wanted to stay revenue neutral with respect to sales taxes and include services, we could reduce the sales tax from 5% to 1%. Revenue neutral, you put everybody, whether you're selling goods or services, on the same playing field, and we reduce it to 1%. And the good thing about that, I think, is moving forward, people are going to continue to spend money on services, and you'll see growth there, natural growth. And it doesn't put this wedge between people who provide goods and services. Everybody's being treated the same. But if we continue with retail sales as we are, you're, you're hitching your wagon, or you've got your wagon hitched to a dying horse. This is going to continue to slow down. And with localities having so few sources for revenue, this is going to be a concern, especially in the coming years, three, four years out. Touching a little bit on real estate, I think that, you know, we're all aware of the housing boom that we had. I think when you compare Hampton Roads to the US, you can see our boom was significantly higher than that of the nation, and then we saw the bust. A couple of things happened there. I mean, at the national level, 2003 is when I was trying to buy a house, and it was absolutely miserable. But you had easy access to credit, you know, they were calling them ninja loans, no income, no job, get a loan. You could get money wherever you wanted. Mortgage rates were way, way, way down. And so everybody across the nation was feeding this kind of housing frenzy. But what happened in Hampton Roads is we saw huge increases in military pay. Money flooding into the region's economy. Housing allowances from federal government went way up, and because we have such a large federal presence here, housing allowances going up meant people were spending more on housing. And we had housing prices that were below where they should be, so under-valued housing market. So Hampton Roads went flying up. Then we saw the bust, that dropped off. US and Hampton Roads both saw the same crash. And since then, we've been bumbling around for a little bit. So where are we now? Well, one of the things is, we have not seen housing permits come back. We've seen multifamily, we've seen growth in multifamily, but really with single family, we're nowhere near long-term averages. We're seeing very, very few permits compared to what we saw pre-recession. Homeownership has declined precipitously. It was up around 80%, it's come down to 60%. A lot of people, when they tightened up the regulations for getting a mortgage, they made it very difficult for people to get mortgages. And there's a lot of people, especially DOD people, who are scared off. You know, when you see your home value tumble 20, 30%, you only need to learn that lesson once, you're not going to go and buy a home that quick again. So homeownership rate has, has certainly come down, and we're just not seeing the level of building. Another thing is, we don't have, as I talked about before, the population isn't growing. And when the population's not growing, there's really no need to build a whole lot of new housing. When we look at the housing market, this is realtors going to sell your home and my home, and, and we look at the housing market, is it fluid? It is. Driven predominantly by resales, the housing market is doing quite well. You know, it's easy, you can sell your home pretty quickly. Average sold time on market is continuing to decline, and that means, this is a good thing because it just allows us to see a healthy housing market, not one that's stagnant where you're threat, you're, you're going to see downward pressure on prices. It's healthy, which means that housing prices should remain stable under that environment. In fact, if we look at median sales price in Hampton Roads, these are nominal dollars, but in 2019, we finally surpassed where we were in 2007 for home prices. So in that sense, we are, we're, the housing market is stable. I don't see a whole lot of growth. One of the, the issues that we do have in Hampton Roads still is there's still a high percentage of foreclosures, short sales, REOs, but...
That has an impact, though. When you look at 2011, and if our largest source of revenue is the real estate tax rate, and we keep that constant, we have less dollars coming in because the value of the home is going down.
Correct. Correct.
And that's a, although it doesn't appear to be, that's a pretty significant drop from 2008 to 11. And the slope going back up has been a hard climb.
It's been a slow climb, and, and it's a slow climb that we expect just to continue. At least it's climbing, that's the good news, but it's climbing very slowly. So as long as there's growth, we're not losing, we're not seeing a depression in values. But when you look at this as a main source for locality income, you know, again, your wagon's not hitched to the strongest horse here, it's one that's plodding along very slowly, which can make things difficult. So looking at the, the year ahead, they say economists have two hands. So on the one hand, continued growth in defense spending. Regardless of how you feel about this, when there's defense spending at the national level, it's good for the region, Hampton Roads' economy, and so we're seeing a bump in defense spending that's, that's good for us. We saw a bump over last year that went up significantly. The shipyard is seeing money pouring in, long overdue, so that's fantastic. Consumer spending remains positive. I'd say slowly increasing wages. Wages are increasing, that is good. I'll focus on increasing there. Low energy prices, I think a lot of people forgot that we had $4 per gallon gas prices a while back. And when gas prices and energy prices go up, you don't consume less. The elasticity of demand on energy is virtually not there. It's just a syringe that sucks money out of your wallet, so you gotta take money out elsewhere. You don't go out to eat as much, you don't do as fun things like you'd like to. So low energy prices being low is just kind of like a bump, a boon to us right now. Continued national growth, which is good. Easy monetary policy, essentially. The Federal Reserve Bank has pumped a lot of money into the economy. When they've done that, they're keeping interest rates low. That makes, it's good for the nation in terms of national growth, but also low interest rates helps us here. Construction in Hampton Roads, this is, this is pretty significant because I don't think, since I've ever been here, I've seen so much construction going on. There is a lot going on from transportation infrastructure, what we're seeing at the ports. The DOD is putting a lot of money into military construction right now. We're seeing construction happening all over the place. Not, except the housing sector, that's kind of flat, but elsewhere, we're seeing a great deal of construction, and that's fantastic. One of the things that typically happens after a big recession is you see construction bump immediately fall in recession. Hampton Roads saw nothing for eight years, and now finally we're seeing construction. And so that's fantastic. On the other hand, global trade tensions, these are significant. You know, we're seeing trade deals go back and forth, but I think there's, there's a lack of trust. It's pretty volatile, and we're not sure what's happening, you know, from month to month with these trade deals. And I think the agricultural sector and some other sectors have taken a hard hit there. The global economy is very soft, as are home prices across the nation. You know, we've been growing slowly for a while. I expect us to continue to grow slow, but when you see the, the nation going from kind of stronger growth to weaker growth, that is a leading indicator. Now I'll focus on the slowly part of increasing wages. Wage growth has not been strong. In spite of low unemployment rates, and in spite of easy money and, and the growth in the economy, we have not seen wages rising, especially for, for the less fortunate. This divided government is, is bad for the nation. It's incredibly bad for Hampton Roads. We can't pass simple things up in Washington. That makes it very difficult to make decisions. And when you can't make decisions, uncertainty creeps up. And one thing that the private sector hates is uncertainty.
That's right.
When you can't make long-term investments, or even short-term investments, because you can't count on your government to do the simple things, that certainly hurts us, and it hurts the region, it hurts our localities. And I don't see an end to the divided government anytime soon, unfortunately. We are seeing a start, a slowdown a little bit in the US economy, so at least we're still seeing growth, that's good. Coronavirus is kind of an unknown in terms of what'll happen there. It certainly can impact the international economy, and when it impacts the international economy, we could see slowdown nationally and then regionally because of that. Just a couple of things. I, I opened this presentation by saying that economists are horrible at forecasting. One of the things that are especially horrible at forecasting is recessions. They don't do it well at all. That said, roughly 30% of economists expect a recession in the next 12 months. I really have no thought on that, other than to say, it's been 10 and a half years since the past, last recession. Typically, we see a recession every 48 months, it's five years. We see a recession, or sorry, 58 months, 60 months. So anyways, that's not to say that, that, that there's a recession looming in the wind, but this is the, the longest expansion we have seen since the Great Depression. So when we're looking at forecasts of gross domestic product for the US, if, if we look at that long-term average, you can see that 3.3% bar again. One of the things, the consensus forecast, these are people who are looking at the economy, the, the best economic mind, so to speak, I think the consensus there is, we're just going to not be growing so fast. We have not been growing fast, but it's going to get slower and slower. So if we look at the forecast for 2020 for Hampton Roads and the nation, for the nation, the, the blue chip forecast is for 1.8% growth in the economy. Interest rates with the Federal Reserve policy is, is certainly keep interest rates low, 1.5%, 1.9% for long-term. In Hampton Roads, I've got a forecast of 2.7% for the, the regional economy. And I just want to note, the last time I forecasted Hampton Roads to outpace the national economy was in 2009. And we actually did, but we kind of outpaced them in a strange way. We, we declined by 0.7%, and the national economy declined by 2.3%. So we beat them, but in a, in a bad way. Civilian employment, just under 2%. The unemployment rate, we expect to remain quite low, just under 3%. Retail sales, we saw a pretty significant bump, like I said, but in, in this recent year, a lot of that bump came from capturing online sales that weren't captured before. And single permits, I expect this year to see some pretty slow growth after a not-so-strong 2019. So talking a little bit about the gross product again, the green line is Hampton Roads, black line is US, and this is growth in gross product. And you can see, going all the way back to 2010, the nation has been beating us every single year. And the forecast for this year is finally Hampton Roads surpassing the nation, and I'm pretty excited about that. So that's short-term. Now we start looking long-term again. And so what you see here is federal debt held by the public. And this is from the Congressional Budget Office, taking us all the way back to 1790. Not many of us remember those days. But you can see how this is kind of, you can see how this kind of bumped along with Civil War, World War I, Great Depression, World War II. And then you look at this projected, now this is debt as a percentage of GDP. So it's really capturing a lot of things together, but it's probably the best way to look at it. And the concern here is, you know, as, as debt goes up, we limit our ability to have the resources to do anything when the economy turns south. In 2011, when we had sequestration, that was such an incredible hit to Hampton Roads. And if y'all remember what sequestration was, that was automatic cuts that, that went into place. Essentially, the federal government took out a shotgun, pointed it at their leg, and said, if we don't get together and do something, we're going to shoot our leg off. And so they shot their leg off, and they made across-the-board cuts in a very unstrategic manner, and that hurt a lot of corporations, businesses, governments, in, in ways that we really didn't expect to see. And the reason that came about is because we could not rein in spending at the national level. Since that time, we've removed budget caps, we're spending like crazy, we're giving tax cuts, and we're seeing debt...
Climb.
Climb. And at some point, nobody can tell you when, you know, we're going to see Washington want to have to deal with this again. And so if you looked at federal outlays by major category, the green is, is mandatory outlays, that's things like Social Security, Medicare, Medicaid. Right now, those are mandated, so you have to spend money on those. The blue is what is called discretionary outlays. So that's really what the, the, you know, when, when Congress meets, that's what, really what they're talking about is these discretionary outlays. And then you have net interest. And interest is how much money we're spending on the debt, and we have very, very, very low interest rates. Could you imagine what would happen if interest climbed? Because right now, interest on the debt is seeing the largest amount of growth. So here's my fear. At some point, we have to deal with these discretionary expenditures, 51% of which are defense and 49% are not defense. So when you rein in this spending, you have to do it through discretionary expenditures, and when you touch discretionary expenditures, you have a hard time doing it without touching defense. And when you touch defense, you saw what happened the last time they did it, and how it impacted this region. So I don't know when this is going to happen, but I'm concerned because in the next couple of years, I imagine this issue will come before the government, and we'll have to deal with it one way or another. And that has the, certainly the power to hurt Hampton Roads. So what do we do? Right now, there's a lot of ongoing regional initiatives that I'm actually pretty excited about. A lot of localities are working together in a fantastic manner that I have not seen in some time. We've got $5 billion in infrastructure projects going on right now in Hampton Roads. $5 billion, the second most in the entire nation.
It's financed by this region.
Financed by us.
Every single penny of it.
Yes. I want big signs on the highway that said, you know, your regional tax dollars at work, because that's what it is. We're all paying for it, which is fantastic, but I want people to understand, you know, this isn't the federal government coming in and helping us. The state contributes 5%, but this is essentially Hampton Roads fixing our transportation network, and it's a collection of local governments working together to make this happen in a fantastic fashion. The interconnected regional fiber network, we're trying to take advantage of these undersea cables that are ending up on our beach here and doing something with it worthwhile. We have the south side put together, we have a plan to connect the peninsula and then the western part of the region. But this is how we can work together to all benefit from something that's happened. And again, very, very exciting. We've put together an economic development sites inventory. Essentially, what was happening before is when people were looking to put manufacturing, play manufacturing places in, or any type of business, and they're looking for who has sites available for them to work with. And the Commonwealth of Virginia had nothing, they didn't even have a list. They had no idea what was going on. So Hampton Roads got together and said, we need to develop an inventory of this, so we know what sites are available. know what sites are available and what level they're at." You can have tier one through five and the tier four, five sites are the best sites. If we have a list, then at least we have people looking at us. Before that, we didn't even have anybody looking at us. So Hampton Roads got up on this and put together a sites inventory. The state thought, "Well, you guys, that's fantastic." The state came in behind and did the rest of the state. Hampton Roads is ahead of the Commonwealth, leading the Commonwealth in this initiative, but this is fantastic news because finally, instead of trying to sell from an empty cart, we're stocking some stuff and saying, "Hey, this is important. We have a site that you can land on and we'll work it for you." The regional branding initiative, I know this, this didn't take off well from a lot of localities. This was not, this is the whole 757 thing that people got angry and frustrated about and you're trying to change their name and all this stuff. And, you know, I had a laugh because people in my office hated it, right? 757, what are you talking about? It's an area code. It went over horribly, but I'm excited about it. And the reason is because I don't see this as a name change, right? I see it as here's an undercurrent of something that a lot of people that are not me and older than me didn't see, but were aware of, that there's an undercurrent of people that are using this and it's not an area code to them, it's something they attach to and we're not trying to change the name through 757. We're just trying to bring people together for a sense of regional identity. And when people are already doing that, if you can attach on to that momentum that's already there, I think that's a fantastic thing because, you know, when you go to a lot of other regions, I mean, everybody's seen the RVA stickers and stuff, but a lot of other regions have a regional identity. We don't have one here. I think that's step one of a 10-step plan and the fact that somebody's actually doing something, putting thought into this, investing in this, I think is great because it's been a long time since that's happened and I think the more people can, you know, put support behind it, the better opportunity we have of actually developing that regional brand and getting people excited and passionate about a really phenomenal area that we live in. The restructuring of regional economic development, this was a huge, huge undertaking. For years and years, we've had an economic development alliance representing the region that really didn't work with the localities, that was kind of at odds with the region in some ways and that had a single mission of just trying to go out and market the region. They weren't doing that really well because they weren't funded appropriately and so we've kind of restructured that and are in the process of restructuring that so that we can work together hand-in-hand with the localities and as a region and market it as one. And I think this in coming years should prove to really kind of reshape how we think economic development works in this region. We've got a revenue sharing model that we're trying to put together. The peninsula has already signed on to this. We've got Chesapeake and Isle of Wight and Franklin that have signed on to it, but essentially what this does is it allows local governments to work together. They come together to work and to invest in projects and share revenues in a way that we weren't able to before. That we hope to expand through the South Side. And then offshore wind development. I can't tell you how excited I am about this opportunity. You know, five, six years ago, planning district staff, me and a couple of other people put together a study on offshore wind and a bunch of other energy options and we looked at this and said, "No way, can't ever work, you know, here's why, here's why, here's why." So much has changed in the energy industry and what we've seen, when we saw private companies coming to Hampton Roads and recognize that the number one site for development for offshore wind is right here in Portsmouth, the number one site up and down the East Coast. You have a $100 billion industry burgeoning up on the East Coast that can set to match the current global supply of offshore wind. So everything that's across the globe, right now, we're going to see built along the East Coast and Hampton Roads has the best stop to put this stuff together. Portsmouth has the best stop to put this together. So we've been working with the state, we've been working with the port, we've been working with the localities to really get behind this because it's not just about taking this windmill and sticking it in the water. It really is at the nascent stages of a huge industry cluster that's never been here before. And how many times in your life do you get to see the development of an industry cluster and have some input in that? So I think this is something that benefits Portsmouth, Hampton Roads, Virginia, North Carolina, Maryland. I mean, this is going to expand out if we do it right and we're super happy that the port has got on board with the marine terminal. I think we're going to start seeing a great deal of investment here, but essentially what this means is jobs, manufacturing jobs and hopefully a burgeoning of an alternative energy sector that's not just limited to offshore, but really we start using our marine employment base and our industrial employment base to start developing and manufacturing components all over the East Coast and even worldwide. So I'm incredibly excited about that. One thing just to think about, you know, I talk a lot about the region. We have all these jurisdictions in the region that work together. Hampton Roads is kind of, Virginia is kind of unique. If you look at all the metropolitan areas in the states and you say, "How many people get up in the morning and leave their jurisdiction of residence and go to work? How many, what percent of the workers do it?" Five of the top 10 are in Virginia. Virginia is structured very strangely compared to the rest of the nation. We don't have, you know, one dominant city like Indianapolis surrounded with other little cities. My, that's just, what we are is multi-nucleic. We have people that live in one jurisdiction, work in another and all the employment centers are distributed throughout the region. And I think that's really important because it means you have to work together a lot and I was just looking at this. Two-thirds of Portsmouth workers, people working in Portsmouth, two-thirds of them don't live in Portsmouth.
Right.
Two-thirds. And if you look at almost 60% of people who are in Portsmouth, wake up in the morning, go to work, aren't working in Portsmouth, they leave Portsmouth. So that's especially important, I think, to see how each of these localities fits into the region because we, you know, we win as a region and we lose as a region and I think that's really important to remember with a lot of these initiatives that are going on. Anyways, that completes my comments. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Very, very good. Thank you so much. Questions? This fits in well with where we are in this season of the year, which is the budget. And really, thank you so much.
My pleasure. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Mayor, we'll have Mr. Philip Cash and Mrs. Sarah Kirk of H.R.A. Advisors to come forward and speak to us on the housing track.
Having a good job. I was there. Thank you.
So I have the mic in here now, I was looking down for a mic, there's no mic in here.
Just speak loud, there's a mic that picks you up.
Got you, right there. So I'm Philip Cash, partner at H.R.A. Advisors.
Sarah Kirk, I'm a director with H.R.A. Advisors.
And what we're going to do today is we're going to talk through the Portsmouth City White Housing Plan. We are in the early days of the plan and the goal here is really to get into a little bit about what we're doing. I hope this conversation will be, this will be somewhat a conversation. So we're going to go through some slides and present. I hope you feel comfortable interrupting us, asking questions and we're going to ask you a couple of questions as we go throughout. So H.R.A. is a real estate economic development consulting firm. We really focus on the intersection of public and private interest. So about half the time, we work for the public sector in this situation where the public sector wants the private sector to do something and they're trying to figure out what incentive, what regulatory requirement, what investment infrastructure would be effective to make that happen. The other half the time, we work for the private sector, large developers, property owners, corporations, where they want something from the public sector, an investment in infrastructure or change to regulation and they're trying to make an argument that what they're doing creates a public benefit and we help them do that. Sometimes we help them explain what the public benefit is, sometimes we explain to them that what they're doing doesn't really have a public benefit and they're going to need to adjust their plans to help support a park or something. All of our work is essentially focused at the intersection, public and private interest and the built environment. It's a pretty broad range of issues. So the firm's about 140 staff, headquartered in New York, offices in DC, Raleigh, a couple of staff down in Atlanta, Dallas and LA. We work on a broad range of issues. So it's everything from helping cities pursue Amazon HQ2. So we worked on that in New York, in DC, Pittsburgh, to working with mayors in Puerto Rico to build their capacity post hurricane and do recovery. I lead our housing practice, which is what we're going to be working on here today. And our housing practice, we work across the country and we work in three areas. We do plans and strategies, which is what we're going to talk with you all about and that's about understanding the market, understanding what the government, what the community's goals are and then figuring out what are the interventions that are actually going to make that work. Then we actually do design the policies and interventions. So we design inclusionary zoning policies, we do public land disposition, we do redevelopment and disposition for downtown areas and then we do transactions. So actually multifamily development, usually mixed income, multi-use. So we work at all levels. We do the plans, we actually do the government policies, the plans recommend and we actually do the transactions. We like to believe that makes us better at what we do because we've seen bad policy. We've seen our own policy not work quite the way we want sometimes, so we have some experience on that. We were brought in by the city to really get into a housing plan. It was with a consideration of affordability, but really broader than just affordability when we started to look at this. And we, our process is, I think, pretty straightforward. There's a little formatting issue, just forgive me, the plan completion there goes to the end, but it describes it as if it's a linear process, but the reality is this is a little bit more iterative. We're into the analysis now and we're not going to spend a lot of time giving you, going through data on your housing market, although we can pull some of that up primarily because you know about it and you've actually had previous studies on that and we've got pretty clear guidance that it wouldn't be really what you wanted to spend your time on. So we're going to talk a little bit today about what we're seeing in the analysis and a lot about potential strategies and areas of focus and want you, want you to start to weigh in, do these feel like the right areas? If we come back to you with recommendations in these areas, is it going to feel on target? Are we missing areas that should, are really important? Are there other areas we should be getting into? Are we chasing, are we chasing our tails on something or barking up the wrong tree in a different place? Fundamentally, we're trying to understand what are the trends in your local housing market and I actually think the previous presentation was a great setup because jobs in the economy drive your housing market, because things are pretty closely related.
Yeah.
And we're trying to figure out, okay, if this is a larger trend, what do those actually mean for Portsmouth? And I think they mean for Portsmouth in a couple of ways. What do they mean for you overall and what do they mean for you in terms of your goals for your community? Because every community really has different priorities when it comes to housing. We're seeing two primary areas where we think the strategies are going to be organized around and everything we're talking about is kind of organized. These two questions is, one, how to attract residents and frankly, which residents you're trying to attract, so which households are you trying to bring into Portsmouth? Because regionally, the economy is not maybe growing as hard as much as we might like. So you're in competition with each other, with other communities in the region.
Sure.
Who's attracting, how that's working out. And then the other piece is you have existing residents, which, as you went to office, and what do we need to be doing in the housing market to help them? What are the housing challenges they're facing and how are we addressing those housing challenges? So really, our strategies at the highest level are about addressing those two questions. Who do we want to be attracting and how are we going to do that? And what are we doing to help our residents? It'll get much more complicated than that, but that's the simplest level of what we're trying to do. I'm going to talk a little bit, so jumping straight to the punchline, usually we spend a lot of time talking about initial market analysis, but these are the three areas that seem to be coming out if you start to look at your data. And we're going to go through each of these areas and talk about them in more detail, but promoting downtown revitalization, strengthening existing neighborhoods and reducing the concentration of poverty. And we're going to go through each of these and talk about them in more detail. We want you to be thinking about what we're recommending here and what we're saying and again, whether we're missing anything or on the wrong track.
So when we talk about promoting downtown revitalization, what we're really talking about is encouraging private development and there's a number of ways that the city can do that, but the outcome that we're really hoping for is catalytic redevelopment of downtown that brings retail, entertainment, residents to downtown and creates a real city center with a high quality of life that can, again, to Philip's point, benefit existing residents, but also provide an area of attraction for residents who might be interested in moving to Portsmouth. So when we look at the population trends in Portsmouth, one of the things that stands out is that one of the areas where Portsmouth population is growing is in non-family households. Those are households that might be really interested in a highly amenitized downtown. So that's one of the reasons why we were sort of initially looking at downtown development as a real opportunity area for Portsmouth.
Yeah, just going back on. I mean, when we look at your market and we have a lot more analysis, there are some real negatives in the market as a whole and Portsmouth faces real challenges on the housing front and that's worth talking about and we try to address it in other areas, but there's also areas, this is an area where you're stronger and how are we going to, there's an opportunity to try to build on that strength. I think there's a question about, is a downtown, a downtown market tends to be more attractive for families with no children. So is this actually both an opportunity because you're already strong there and an opportunity because it happens to be an asset you have in place?
And we have, of course, seen, there has been some housing development already going on in and around downtown. One thing that stood out to us is that, you know, you've had several multifamily developments, but when we look for things like townhouse developments or other kinds of housing, there hasn't been as much development. So that's another area where we think there's maybe potential for a market.
And so we're trying to understand, like, you know, just across, we have Norfolk over there, there's multifamily rental development, you know, we're often in favor of and probably makes some sense in your market, but is that the only housing type or is that the right housing type for what we're looking for? For downtown area, you're going to need higher levels of density, but that doesn't necessarily just mean stick-on podium type of construction, which is most of what we're seeing in the region. So start to raise questions, one, you do have some strength there and two, what are the other types that might make more sense for your market?
The other thing that the city really has is a lot of publicly-owned land. Now, obviously, some of these are buildings, but there's a lot of open space, surface and structured parking, sites owned by the city and by other public entities that are either not used currently or underused. And public land is really one of the core opportunities that the city has to influence development. By either selling at below-market rates or providing land to development, you can catalyze development that might not be financially feasible otherwise. And the city has a significant amount of control over the specific public benefits and development types that you look for when you're thinking about selling public land for, to support development.
Really, when you put public land out there, you're a partner in the deal. Now, you may not be the developer, but you're a partner in the deal in that otherwise, the private sector's doing something, the government for the most part can't, frankly, probably shouldn't be interfering with what's going on there. But when you're putting public land, you have the ability to pick a project and pick a project because it, maybe it doesn't have the greatest financial benefit at the project level, but has a benefit for the larger area. So it starts, when you're a private developer, you're thinking about what, how to maximize for your particular project. So what's going to make you the highest level of return? That's what free market economy is about. But when you're a public sector and you're putting land out there, you have the ability to say, "Okay, this is a project that maybe this won't make the most possible funding for this one site, but it's going to stimulate property values around me and support my tax base, it's going to create, support retail activity." You have the ability to actually be a partner in the deal and pick the development that really fits, fits your goals. And we know this is something you all have looked at a fair, a number of times, a fair amount already in Portsmouth, so I don't think this is a new concept for you.
So at this point, we've got some ideas about what this would look like for Portsmouth and what we want to talk about is if this is the right approach, when we come back, we'll have some more detail about each of these things. But when we talk about how Portsmouth can support downtown revitalization, as we've said, public land is a huge, huge asset that the city has to catalyze development. Another thing that we think is really important is making a plan. What do you want downtown to look like? How much development is there going to be? What are the streetscape improvements, the infrastructure improvements, stormwater improvements that the city wants to make and how is that going to drive an overall vision for downtown? Having set that, I'm sorry.
I think one thing is this is just, every city has different goals on this and again, you have other, you know, again, I'm going to keep picking on Norfolk because they're right there and they're also trying to revitalize their downtown. Their goal may be to be attracted across the region. At some extent, we know that's their goal. Your goal for your downtown may be more oriented towards the local market and maybe more oriented towards existing residents. There's different scales and it's always hard when you have a new development and you're going to the community with drawings and proposals because you're going to get pushed back on whatever you propose. It's a much easier conversation where there's consensus on, these are the things, not site-specific, but at a high level, we want retail that serves our community, we want a grocery store, whatever those things are, everyone always wants a grocery store.
Yeah.
What are those things? And then you start to see plans. It's still hard to get development approved, but usually the plan gives more comfort and more support on that. It also lets you organize your infrastructure investment.
It also helps communicate to the development community the things that the city is really interested in seeing and set the tone and set the framework for development so that a developer then has the confidence to say, that a developer then has the confidence to say, I know that my proposal is going to be well-received, because the city has already said that this is what they want to see. And then the other piece of that is to continue to engage in regulatory reform. We know this is something that the city's already been working on, but setting zoning that can align with the plan that's been set for downtown, setting development review processes that can be understood easily and navigated by developers are all things that can help to incentivize development and to make that catalytic redevelopment start to build momentum for downtown.
Downtown redevelopment revitalization is a, is a public-private partnership by definition. You're making public sector investments in infrastructure, you're putting public land out there, and the private sector is making investments. The idea on the regulatory reform is to give clarity on what, where the risk points are. So what is the uncertainty? It doesn't mean the public sector shouldn't be weighing in and having an opinion on what gets developed, it's really about having clarity in that process. So, so a developer knows, these are the points where I'm going to get approval, and after I have that approval, I can move forward, and I make, make the investments in getting architectural drawings and all those different costs, soft costs that go into development, and not, and not get surprised halfway through the process. So downtown revitalization is extremely common. We work on it all over the country, we point at some, there's some examples up here, I can talk about them. This also comes back to what drives each location and how you approach it, is again, the community's goals, and then the tools that are actually available to them. In some situations, it's about having public land, primarily driven by public land, in other situations, you're using tax incremental financing, other situations, you're moving towards a bond, other situations, it's a major infrastructure investment. Sometimes, you know, we're talking about Quincy, Quincy, Mass. The situation here was basically, there was a large historic building parcel that needed to be redeveloped, it was blighting downtown. There was also a need for medical facility, and the city recognized that it could just build, it could get, you know, it could come up with funding, it could get the medical facility built, but it actually had a broader set of needs at downtown, and it was going to put more funding into the project, and look for it to be both the medical facility, but also housing and commercial activity, because it needed revitalization. So basically, it took a project and made it bigger, because it had a broader set of needs, you know. Battle Creek, downtown, Battle Creek is a pretty small city in Michigan. You know, I don't know how much you guys track Michigan, but their economic report is much scrimmer than the economic report you just received, and Battle Creek has suffered through that. And it really became a question, this is a town that's losing population, and their orientation was, how are we going to consolidate? How, where are we going to, where do we want, where do we want to be driving growth? And it really, their focus was on rehabilitating vacant and blighted properties. That's a different view, frankly, than what you're on, but it was a small scale, they weren't trying to draw from the region, they were trying to make sure that the growth and the economic activity stayed centered in their core, as opposed to sprawling out along the edges. And then, you're all very familiar with Virginia Beach, I don't put that example up there saying that's what you want, but you're aware of the concept, and probably have some opinions about some things you do and don't like about how that moves forward.
We have a town center already.
Downtown. The sprawl along the edge piece there.
So when we talk about strengthening existing neighborhoods, we're really talking about a couple of different things, but they're all really related. We want to support existing residents in the neighborhoods throughout Portsmouth, but we also want to attract new homeowners by making strategic investment in neighborhoods with market potential. So Portsmouth's already done a fair amount of work around this, and we were able to draw on that, the character areas map over here, and it was produced as part of a previous planning effort. We've took, we've taken a look at that, we've taken a look at the neighborhoods, at the market data, and we've started to talk about four different types of neighborhoods. This does not cover all of the neighborhoods in Portsmouth, but there's some themes that you can start to draw out. So we have the greater downtown and the waterfront, walkable pre-war neighborhoods, those are those sort of older neighborhoods that have some historic charm, but also face a lot of housing quality issues due to the age of the buildings there. The post-war neighborhoods, those are your sort of mid-century suburban-type neighborhoods. And then the inner-ring suburban communities, which are those neighborhoods that were primarily built in the 80s, 90s, starting to show their age, right, but, but definitely newer compared to the rest of the city. And so, we're, we're talking about, when we talk about supporting existing neighborhoods, there are some strategies that I think apply to all of these, and there's some that are maybe going to be a little bit more focused, either on a particular type of neighborhood or on particular neighborhoods within one of these types. We've seen, and I don't think it's, will be a surprise to anybody in this room, that one of the primary challenges facing Portsmouth neighborhoods is that, on average, the housing is a lot older, it's a lot smaller
Yeah.
than the region. You also see somewhat lower homeownership rates than, than the rest of the region. I think Norfolk's a bit lower, but if you look at other parts of the region, you have homeownership rates closer to 60, 70, 80 percent. I think 70, it tops out a little, a little over 70. And so that's a challenge, and that's something, I think, from the first conversations that we had, that we were talking about.
It's a challenge you all are aware of. Like, this isn't, everyone's aware of this, every interview we've had, every conversation has talked about, you have smaller housing stock, we have a higher, you know, external, outside investors taking care of property, which sometimes are great, and sometimes they're not such great folks to have, while you're property. And, you know, you're, you're a built-out community, you're not in a situation where you're going to be annexing and adding suburbs any time in the near future.
So then we have, it has, becomes a conversation about, how can we make sure that we are providing quality housing stock and supporting our residents, supporting homeownership when that's appropriate, but also just making sure that people are able to access the housing that they need and quality housing, whether they're renting or owning. So some of the tools that we talk about, when we talk about supporting existing neighborhood, include supports for homeownership, which could be down payment assistance, it could also be programs to identify vacant properties and rehab them, make them available for the, for potential homeowners, improving housing quality, again, both for renters and for owners, making whether that's loans or grants to make emergency repairs and upgrades, whether that's tax-based tools.
Or code enforcement activity.
Exactly.
And to be clear on the homeownership, like, these are not, these are, many of these are programs you either have in place currently or have run previously, and it becomes a conversation about, are these programs we want to revisit? Are these programs that could be better targeted? Could they be reinvigorated? Increasing homeownership, part of that's a government activity, part of that is, you know, flippers, there's, you know, there's lots of television shows about flipping houses. They're, flipping houses is a mixed blessing, but the idea that the private sector is going to buy properties, that, buy a property that's a three-bedroom, one-bath in your market, make the investment and turn it into a three-bedroom, two-bath, that's frankly, more competitive to attract a homeowner, that's something we, you know, that's a homeownership, that's an increasing homeownership program, and generally, all things being equal, assuming you're getting good quality construction, you want to be encouraging. So understanding where, you know, where are the places they're interested in targeting? How would you make that neighborhood more attractive to them? How do you bring, like, bring them into the process? There's also just, you know, straight government subsidy programs where you're actually helping close some of the financial caps. There's less, we just had a conversation about how things are booming fiscally, so I'm sure you'll have lots of extra money for this, so no problems there, but we have to be pretty carefully targeted. So we understand a lot of this is coming, and when we come back to you all, the recommendation space, this is going to be targeted around programs that really lead with the private sector.
And a significant part of this is going to be neighborhood planning as well, right? Having conversations with the residents of the neighborhoods to understand where are those core needs that can be addressed, and how the city can work with residents to address those needs.
And the same thing on improving housing quality. So it's both, there's public investment, there's also how to use code enforcement to encourage private activity.
Do you want to talk about this?
Yeah, so I'll go through the examples relatively quickly, we're happy to, there are many, many, many different ways that can be covered, but lots of communities have different efforts to basically target neighborhoods and have been effective. And the analysis is pretty clear that you can be effective in moving markets and moving neighborhoods if you target. So, I'll go through, there was a program, the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, there's a foreclosure progress, foreclosure crisis, 2008. NSP was a federal program, Neighborhood Stabilization Program, $8 billion that went out to neighborhoods across the country. The idea was, you'd buy properties, you'd fix them up, put them back on the market, so you can start to attract activity in the market. It wasn't a big success, but they went back and studied it, and where was it, where was it actually effective at strengthening neighborhoods? Basically, if you touched between one and, about one in 12 houses in a neighborhood over a five-year period, really focusing on houses at corners, high-profile, you started to generally see property values actually start to swing up, move more than the market. So you actually saw a direct impact there. So it's possible to do this if you're impacting things the neighborhoods really need, those are commercial corridors that really need to get, you know, addressed, if it's vacant and buy a stock. Targeting can make this work, and there's a number of case studies that show how that goes. Deconcentrating poverty. So this is really about the, the people side. So this is about making sure residents who are living in poverty have support, both to improve their economic situation and move to areas of greater opportunity, that are not areas of concentrated poverty. Portsmouth is, you know, we went through the analysis, you all have done a pretty strong job about reinvesting in your public housing in terms of the actual quality of the housing stock. So we don't, you know, usually we come in, we have a lot of recommendations, that we did a bunch of work with Norfolk on that. There are some things to be done, but generally, you've done pretty solid work. There's not a lot of low-hanging fruit here. What we're talking about here is the fact that you still have a high portion of the poverty. You know, you're shouldering a significant portion of the region's poverty, and as, you know, Norfolk redevelopment, St. Paul's quadrant, they're going to push that down, and those residents are going to go somewhere, so I wouldn't be surprised to see in five or 10 years, you, you know, potentially in the first-place category here. There are, what this is about, is about expanding local opportunities for mixed-income housing, and helping people with support for moving to opportunity. So where folks have vouchers, so section, think section eight vouchers, how are we making sure they actually end up in an area that's not concentrated poverty, where they have access to better schools, better, this is about better outcomes for the community, because concentrated poverty isn't good for anybody, the studies are pretty good.
Yeah.
Pretty clear on that? It's, it's also about helping those households. So just giving someone a voucher and saying, good luck, go get them, generally doesn't work. Your landlord, they need, they need support, they need guidance on this. There are a number of programs that have gone on over the last 10, 15 years, related to public housing redevelopment, that have shown some excess, success on this. So Seattle's been pretty good on this, Chicago and Baltimore aren't up here, but they've done pretty well on this. But this is about making an investment in terms of providing additional services to households as they're trying to locate places to live, about creating partnerships with landlords, and making sure those landlords actually, you know, landlords have legitimate concerns, how are we addressing those legitimate concerns, and how we're supporting folks when they're making a move? Because to me, this is, an area might be a better area of opportunity, but if somebody needs their aunt, their cousin, or their sister to be taking, helping them take care of their children, and they need to be in walking distance, moving them somewhere where they don't have access to public transit, and they don't have that social network, isn't actually very helpful. So understanding that and giving the support to make sure it happens is really helpful. Having areas of poverty, deconcentrating poverty is necessary to get economic activity and attract people.
Yes.
People are not going to choose to move to areas of poverty.
Nope.
Data on that is extremely clear. We also put Norfolk up here, people first, hopefully, not to antagonize you too much, but Norfolk is moving forward on this, and we were involved in some of this work. There's two ways this could potentially go. It could end up with more folks being relocated into
Displaced.
Yeah, displaced, relocated into Portsmouth, or people forth, could be a strategy, actually, there's some potential for partnership there, where they, you know, the infrastructure, the capacity, the systems they've built are actually something that you can leverage and work a little bit more collaboratively. Because really, Norfolk and Portsmouth are generally in the same boat here. To the degree that there's some collaboration there, you all actually have an aligned set of interests, but that's not necessarily how people, you know, not, that won't happen automatically, regional collaboration's never easy. So I went through a lot, I went through it quickly. The goal here for us is to put these options out in front of you, get feedback both now and over time. What we'll be coming back with is a more detailed set of recommendations, so I had a lot of things at a higher level, but what we're coming back with is specific recommendations and how those would actually move forward that would be put into an actual plan. So my apologies for speaking so quickly, but I wanted to be respectful of time.
No problem.
Sir, one thing I did have that, that I really didn't see, you know, we know that housing costs are taking a lot more of family income versus in the past, but I really didn't see, and I understand what you're talking about, strategy, I didn't see much about senior housing, because we have an aging population, and folks may not be able to age in their homes, and so we need a stock, or at least have a strategy for, for producing some, some quality, affordable senior housing.
We definitely saw that in the data, and we didn't set it as a focus area, but it's certainly something we've worked on before and can pull on some recommendations around that issue.
Mayor, this team has appointments that are scheduled starting tomorrow with different components of our city. They will be meeting with each of you all, I think the mayor's meeting is tomorrow, they will be coming back, they will be meeting with the poverty task force, they will be meeting with communities, this will be a total engaging process. Tonight, they were just giving you a preview of the landscape of how they have configured and assessed the housing that we have here.
We look forward to working with you.
Thank you all.
Thank you for the show, Professor.
Very good. Billy. Early.
I thought his name was Holt.
Billy Holt. Mr., Mr. Holt Butt will make his presentation, thank you. Seems like you said, June. No, you're not. Oh, excuse me, Mr. Holt Butt the Third. Thank you.
That's it. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, thanks for having me here tonight, as I present the annual reassessment of real, real property for the city of Portsmouth for fiscal year 2021. The proposed values that I discuss here tonight are as of January 1st, 2020, and will be effective July 1st, 2020. Last year, I got accused of giving an Oscar speech, but I think it's important to help those people that helped me achieve my goals every year, and this is certainly a list that may not be all-inclusive, but it's, like I said, it's And my staff, I just want to say a minute about them, they're amazing, each one is committed to my, to my vision for our office and to council's vision for the city. They work very hard. State code under Title 58.1 tasked me as city assessor to list and maintain records on all real property within the city. The goal is to assess all real property at 100% of fair market value, and to ensure that the burden of taxation rests equally upon all taxpayers. There are many definitions of market value out there, but the one that has stood the test of the courts in the state of Virginia, as it pertains to assessments, states that fair market value is the price a property will bring if, if it is offered for sale by one who desires but is not obliged to sell it, and bought by one who is under no necessity of having it. I spoke just a minute ago about my staff's commitment to our office's mission, and that mission states that the office of the city assessor is to appraise all real property throughout the city in a fair and equitable manner, as mandated by the code of the state of Virginia, the code of the city of Portsmouth, and in accordance with the professional guidelines set forth by IAAO. My commitment is that this mission will be carried out in a courteous, efficient, and professional manner by a well-trained staff dedicated to the service of the citizens of Portsmouth. We appraise approximately 36,000 parcels every year in our office, and on a daily basis, staff is requested to do such things as process parcel combinations and subdivisions, process and validate transfers, perform various statistical analyses, inspect and collect data on new construction, update records on existing properties for demolitions, new additions, renovations, et cetera, and most importantly, provide assistance to the public. The next few slides will highlight some of the positive trends relative to real property specific to Portsmouth. This slide shows that we are experiencing continued steady growth in the total number of transfers. This is the fifth consecutive year in growth of transfers. For the fourth year in a row, foreclosures have decreased. We hope to keep seeing this trend year over year, but I think we're going to see sort of a leveling off of this. Foreclosures have tended to become a way of life in the market now, and, you know, as long as our, as our transfers continue to grow, the percentage of foreclosures to sales will hopefully continue to shrink, as it has done for, for the past five or six years. And here we see another, this is a significant development, in my opinion, in our market. The days on market for sold properties has dropped to 59 now. Again, this is a four-year trend downward. 59 is, is a pretty good number, and it means that our market is 59 is, is a pretty good number, and it means that our market is, is doing very well. And then the most significant is this right here. A very sharp increase in the average sale in Portsmouth. This is driven in part, I think, to the continued increase in new housing inventory by way of infill development. And I think with the startup of the two Ryan Home projects, we may see this trend continue over the next couple of years, I hope. These next few slides, I'm just going to flip through. They show each of the individual neighborhoods and how much the values increased. And this is not to say each property will increase by this amount or decrease. It's the overall value increase of the neighborhood. So, we could, we could go through each one of them, but it'd take me to do that. So, I said a minute ago, we have 36,000 parcels. What we're dealing with here is the taxable parcels. We have 31,952 residential parcels in 186 assessing neighborhoods. We have 2,413 commercial parcels that are taxable in seven commercial neighborhoods. 2% of residential neighborhoods decreased in value this year. 85% increased in value, and 13% had no change. Residential property values increased by 1.97% and commercial property values increased Our total land book last year, July 1st, 2019, was $7,624,965,352. This reassessment proposes a land book value of July 1st, 2020 of $7,853,461,152. That's a total percentage increase of 2.9%. A total dollar value increase from the reassessment of $228.5 million. And a total impact on revenue at the current tax rate of just under $3 million. The percentage increase from growth, and I think this is very important, is less than 1%. Percentage increase from appreciation is over 2%. That, since I've been here, that hadn't happened. Growth has always carried the day in our reassessment. So, this is a, this is a very good, good thing to see. And that's just the market working, you know, and we're, we're-
We glad to see the market working.
So, the State Corporation Commission assesses railroads, pipelines, and utility companies, and the total taxable value this year for them is 100, a little over 131 million. Total levies are 1.7 million. That's about a $4 million increase over last year on the taxable value, which results in approximately 52,000 in taxes. Here we see our tax abatement programs for disabled veterans, senior citizens' tax relief, and senior citizens' tax freeze. The, the important one here is the DAV program. That's grown from 336 recipients last year at the same time and 775,000 in exonerations to what you see on the screen, 421 recipients, 1.1 million in exonerations. Really good program. And as a result of the assessment, the value of taxable versus non-taxable, and this is, this is strictly dollar value, non-taxable is 42% of our total value, taxable is 58%. And that's, there are different ways of looking at it. You can look at land area, you can look at value, you can look at parcels, and the numbers change anywhere from 50% to here 42% of total value. This is our non-taxable property by type, and you can see there that the federal government is, holds the lion's share of that. As you know, the State Department of Taxation keeps tabs on us by running their own sales study and performing a ratio study on our values. This ratio study compares our assessments, compares how our assessments are performing relative to sales prices. My goal is to have a ratio in the 97 to 98% range, and as you can see here, we're performing pretty well with that ratios.
Good job, man.
Next steps, our assessment notices will be mailed the end of this week to all the property owners. Informal appeal hearings will be, be heard from March 16th to April 10th. I've added about an extra 12 days this year, and I've also added evening sessions, two days to, to help, you know, the residents with that. Staff will continue to process new, that's a typo, I'm sorry, should say new construction and alterations for the fourth quarter, and the land book will be produced after fourth quarter and will be effective July 1st. This is the ad that'll run. I'm going to run this in the next two editions of the bridges, the Sunday insert, so everybody will know when our hearings are and all that. With that, if you have any questions?
Any questions, Billy? Thank you for the good work that you do in your office. It's pretty awesome statistics. We come down to city managers report and report backs. Can you do the report backs first?
Yeah. You have in front of you, Mayor, during the city council community to meet, there was a question regarding the school funding formula and why the debt service component was not included. So, you have the handout that explains as to why that was not included in the explanations below. The next was on, on last night, the request was to bring back position paper on the extending the bridge loan, and we have that information before you.
Here.
I only have five city manager report items, and they're all grants.
Any question? When we get to item 2060, I'll entertain a motion to remove the item from the table, and then after that, if it passes, we'll consider a motion to adopt. All right? The city council liaison reports?
I want to cover you first. Yeah. Attended the EPSC meetings for, had a good presentation from Doug Taylor, referenced the federal government's inactive property lease program. Has a process that indicated will take some time. Does have the support of the, as he referred to, the big Navy or the Secretary of the Navy on up. And there was a presentation report, and I think most of us have seen those numbers from previous presentations.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? Lisa?
Yes. Of course, our Portsmouth redevelopment housing authority meeting was canceled last week due to the inclement weather, so that's going to be rescheduled for March. But the other liaison meeting is our, our school board with our funding formula, and we've all received various emails today and texts and Facebook posts and all kinds of communications dealing with our funding formula that will be presented on our agenda for tonight that goes up for vote. I was surprised last night that the conversation did not come up in the joint meeting regarding a concern for more time or more discussion. Not a word was said by the school board, but today we're flooded with emails and Facebook posts concerning it. So, I would just like to, you know, you know, pose to our, our council, you know, where we are with that. We had a team of members, a committee set for the funding formula that, that produced some good work over a seven-month period of time where they produced a formula funding that we've all been asking for, us as a council and the school board as a body have been requesting a formula funding, and now we're here with one that, that gives the school board the, the same 55.4 million that we allocated last year plus an additional $589,000 this year, starting July 1st. So, we did meet as a liaison, and it was stated that the meeting was contentious. I didn't think so. I think we had a good conversation between the two liaisons that were present there. But we just at a point where our budget is being ready to be presented by our city manager on March 23rd next month, and we, we need to move rather quickly. It was presented to all of us quickly, you know, so that's what we are as professionals, to be able to receive information, to digest the information, to understand the information, and ask questions when you're presented with an opportunity to do that in two joint meetings that we had and one liaison education meeting. We also talked about during our education meeting, a Don for Education program that would allow us to put one cent tax, and we talked about this at our community meeting last Monday at IC Norcom where a one-cent meal tax, I mean, if you're going to go out and have a hamburger somewhere and they tacking on an additional one cent, that would bring us 1.3 million dollars. And if it's two cent, that's 2.6 million, and if it's three cent, then that's 3.6 million that we want to allocate to the schools, which would help close the gap of the 1.1 million that they're asking for in additional funding. And even if we go with the formula funding now, that gives them 55.4 million and an additional 589,000, they're only short by $400,000 to meet their 1.1 million dollar shortfall. So, that is what we had as a meeting. Dr. Patton had some information that was presented to us last year at budget time, and we tried to introduce this as an option. I will be willing to bring it back up. My colleague Nate, who is also education liaison on the committee with me, we had it in deep discussion during the liaison meeting, and, and it seemed to be an option that they well received, of course, Clark Heron and Cartera Fattillo being the two school liaisons. But I was surprised that it didn't come up at the meeting last night. So, that's all that I have for the liaison meetings that I attended. If there's any questions, I can answer.
Do you want to add to that?
Yeah, I'll just add a little bit to that since we were there at the same meeting, and we did discuss the potential of the meal tax. And, you know, I thought I made it clear to the other liaisons, and I tried to explain it different ways that, you know, you know, of course, they're a separate body and they do their own thing, but I was recommending that the two liaisons take the possibility of meal tax back to their board and possibly come forward with a resolution to come to us, supporting the meal tax option, which would give us support if we decided to go that route. And, you know, I haven't heard anything back from that, and I was just explaining to them that was an option where, you know, they were discussing, like last night, they told us 1.1 million. If the meal tax was an option, that'd be the 1.3, which would put them above what they were requesting at the same time, not affecting our budget if we went forward with just the one cent increase. And, you know, I'm sure that would have to go through discussion and, and everything going forward. But that was, you know, a key topic that we discussed with them as a potential way for extra funding without us having to cut something from somebody else's budget within the city.
And before I get to Shannon, I've got something to say on that. Remember, last night I did ask everybody but directly to the school board, was there any other items to discuss? Asked that twice. Second, I think it would be useful if you could give that report when we consider this matter. Do you mind doing that?
Yes, I should.
A larger audience?
Yes, absolutely.
And third, I'm glad you brought up the, the meals tax because I was thinking about that last night. The problem I had last year was that it came up so late in the budget process. This bringing it up now gives us a chance to have a wider and bigger discussion.
Yeah.
And it, it's time might be right. So, I'm glad you, and I, with council's consent, let's ask the city manager to reissue that PowerPoint-
Right.
And send it out tomorrow. Is that good?
Yes. Let the founder, okay. And the date will be the 19th with all the data-
That's fine. You don't have to change anything.
Right. Okay.
Okay, so my report, is that what we asked?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we, the mayor, myself, Dr. Patton, we had a meeting, introductory meeting with Dr. Marcia Conston. Conston is the new president of Tidewater Community College. And we got to know her a little bit, and also Mr. Mark Hugel was in attendance, and we shared some good information. The mayor shared a great deal of history as it relates to Portsmouth and TCC. I thought Dr. Conston was very, very appreciative of it, and we look forward to working with her. She seems like an awesome, awesome individual and comes with a wealth of knowledge and experience. Also, I wanted to mention Dr. Michelle Woodhouse was in the meeting with us, who is the provost of the TCC campus of Tidewater and College.
Thank you. It was a good thing. Yes, sir.
I had one more report. I just, no, that's fine. We're, no, we're good. We had the, the board meeting that happened in the regional jail authority last week, and just some of the top things, talking about some of the medical conditions. We have 22 residents there with cancer. We have 17 residents that are over the age of 65 and 33 that have special needs. And then the one month prior to our most recent meeting, they conducted 337 transports that's going to the jurisdictions for intakes and court transports, but they had a total of 961 transports. That includes medical transports to and from the hospital, to and from doctor's appointments for, you know, stuff that can't be taken care of on site. And so, that's pretty much just the standard of that. But, and here's some really good news that we have. We were advised that we only have 12 vacancies as far as the, the jailers that are in that facility. But to say that we have 12 vacancies, that's after last year, the authority, we approved the hiring of 10 additional officers as of July 1st. So, that's even with the 10 additional, that if we hadn't approved the 10 additional, we would only be two vacancies. And in addition to that, in January, they interviewed a total of 46 candidates. 31 moved forward in the process, and they have 16 going forward in the polygraphs, and they're having interviews this week and next week. So, it's very possible in a week or two, we could fill all 12 of those vacancies going forward. And in reference to the article that came out from the Department of Corrections, and I know these are, get confused, Department of Corrections is the state. That's here in Virginia.
Correct.
The letter that came out from them was very confusing and misleading to a lot of people that read it. The issue that was there could have and should have been taken care of immediately with a phone call. That's how minor it was.
Right.
Talking about investigations and them not providing information. The information that was not passed on was protected information from personnel issues and internal affairs investigations that legally our council advised we are not allowed to send those out. And that's what the, the consideration was, and once that was discussed with them, they understood and that solved that problem. Going forward, that's not an issue. In reference to DOJ, Department of Justice, that's the federal level, we're almost complete, and a lot of this discussion was in closed session, so I can't discuss what was said, but we're almost to a finalized agreement with the Department of Justice. Once this agreement is set forward, we will have a board meeting of the authority, and once it's voted on and it's agreed to, everything will be made public, and there'll be an announcement of what the agreement is. And like I said, that, that's coming very soon. I would say probably before the end of next month at the latest.
I'm the vice chair.
Oh, yes. Thanks for reminding me. This year, they changed and the role of authority, our own Dr. Patton is the vice chair of the Hampton Roads Regional Jail Board Authority.
Congratulations. Devin, you gave us the Poverty Task Force, and you want us to make these appointments?
Yes.
Okay. And I think that under workforce development, it should be the second person should be Gary, We do have a need for a closed session. Let's, let's entertain that motion real quick.
I move to go into closed meeting pursuant to A, Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711-
I move to go into closed meeting pursuant to A, Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711 8.7, for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of city specifically regarding Michael A. Moore versus City of Portsmouth, Portsmouth Circuit Court case numbers 19003403, 19003277, and 190044811, and Integrated Management Group LLC versus City of Portsmouth, Portsmouth Circuit Court case number 19002742, and B, Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711 8.6, for the purpose of discussion or consideration of the investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where if made public initially, the financial interests of the governmental unit would be adversely affected specifically regarding recreational facilities.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Now, Professor, you called the roll call, though, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle, Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simms?
Yes.
Mayor Ruff?